When we get started, everyone can hear me? Great. My name is Jay Talaman. I'm your town moderator. I declare that the warrant has been duly posted and published and that the reading of the special town meeting warrant is hereby waived. If everyone could stand so we could do a pledge of allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. To my left is our town clerk Carol Green and her assistant Amy Brady. Further to my left is the Board of Selectmen, the town administrator Jack Hathaway, and town council David Dineski. Below me is the advisory board. Chairman Dave Ben, if you could introduce the rest of the members of the advisory board?
So the remaining members of the advisory committee are Lisa Keating, Arthur Roncak, Pat Snead, Angela Wayne, and Marion Erickson, sitting in as our able administrator tonight. And there are two members that weren't taken into consideration. They're in the warrant.
Thank you very much. Briefly, our rules for town meeting. We are governed by town meeting time and our local bylaws. I'll explain procedures as needed, but most of you, I recognize from being at previous town meetings. All of our motions, and most of our motions anyway, are made by the advisory board. One type of motion that you may see, which requires little explanation, is a motion to indefinitely postpone. That's a motion to essentially take no action on an article or dismiss an article. Motions and motions to amend are generally in writing. I have all the current motions, but if you want to make a motion to amend, that has to be in writing. We have forms for that, and there are exceptions to that. If it's a minor amendment, a word or two, a typo, I'll take a friendly amendment without having it in writing. There are no more red and green mics here at the Norfolk Town Meeting. I'll try and keep debate as balanced as possible and give people equal time at the mics. Everyone has a chance to speak on a matter, but at a certain point, I do like to avoid repetition. Feel free to come up and speak your piece, but I will cut off debate if it goes on and on on the same subject. You're generally, I may allow someone with new info to speak a third time. You're generally allowed only two times, but by bylaw, I may limit you to two times. You get a maximum of five minutes at the mic for the first time, three minutes for the second time, and I'll give you an exception if you have a presentation that requires something. I don't stick to that rule too tightly, but again, we want to get everyone with enough time to talk, but we also want to keep town meeting moving along. All comments and questions are through the moderator. Come up to a mic. When you do come up to a mic to speak, please give me your name and your address, at least the first time. No personal comments, and all comments must be civil and respectful. We have a lot of local officials here, and between me and them, and Jack Hathaway, and the Board of Selectmen, and the advisory board, we'll try and get everyone's questions answered. There are no cards. I'm going to try and do votes on a voice vote. If I can't do that, I may ask you to raise your hand so I can look out in the audience. And if we can't do that, then I'll count the votes. I've already asked a couple people tactis counters, so if we have to do that, we will do that. I do respect a motion to call the question or cut off debate if you think it's gone on too long. However, if I think you're doing it prematurely, and I still think that there's debate that needs to be had, or that someone wants to speak, I won't take that motion. I'll call that out of order. If you think that I call a vote wrongly, that I say that it passed, but you think that it failed, I will, if seven people stand, we can challenge that vote. So before we get started with the motions, George Cronin is going to give us a very brief update on where we stand with matters regarding the new potential police station, which we'll probably hear a lot more about in the spring. So George, if you can give us a quick update.
Since we last met, the town gave approval to purchase the building at the Shawna Ave. We have done so. We now own the building, and that gives the regional communications center full seat ahead. They are now very shortly will be accepting proposals to put the regional communications centers for the town to non-farm rent that play on the front in that building, which as some, once that gets up in the building, the town and off board will be collecting some rent. There was no agreement yet, but they will be, and the town administrators get together. So that will provide some income to the town, and also will make it a better communication center for all four towns, and also more cost-effective operation. Now, we are also, as a committee, the Public Safety and Building Committee, have gone out and going to be setting proposals for architects in the next three weeks to renovate this building on Shawna Ave, a police station that will go to regional communications center, but also put in addition and renovate existing police and fire station into just a fire station. So we're going to take that time. We, you know, I'm not sure that we'll be ready in the spring because obviously, we want two projects that not only meet the needs of both apartments, but also we want to keep them cost-effective. We want to get them actually tax-free to the town and off board, but at the same time, you know, we have to have operations that they meet the needs of both of these supplies. So that's the latest update on the way to see them.
George, thank you very much, and thanks for everything that your committee is doing. This is a big project, people, so please stay tuned as it unfolds. Okay, I think we're ready to get started. Article one, I think Ms. Wayne. You can follow along right on the screen with a lot of the articles.
Mr. Moderator, I move to transfer amounts from following accounts listed on the handout provided at the special town meeting to the following amounts and accounts listed on the handout.
Explanation.
The transfers are comprised of various reclassifications of budget items based on changing requirements after the budget is approved, as well as supplemental funding and free cash for certain budget lines, but those notably health insurance costs other than employee benefits, which you'll see there, where more employees signed up than originally anticipated, and a couple of small capital items that were being identified apart.
Does anyone have any questions, comments? Seeing none, it's a simple majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Article passes. Article two.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash to the sum of $1,300 and approve the payment of unpaid bill, of an unpaid bill from fiscal year 2014 for janitorial services.
Ms. Wayne, any explanation?
This was just a prior year's bill that we're obligated to pay, and...
So just for those of you following along, prior year bills have to be treated differently than regular budget items. At a special town meeting, it requires a nine-tenths vote. Any discussion on this article? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? It passes unanimously. Article three. Now, this is for committee reports. The way people have talked about this at the last town meeting, just so you know that my general feeling on this, if there's not a motion and no committee has come to me before a town meeting asking to do a presentation, then we're just going to move on to article four. So I was not approached by any specific committee, and there are no motions on the floor, so we will move on to article four.
Mr. Moderator, I move to approve article four as printed in the warrant.
Explanation.
There is approximately $1.1 million in free cash this year. The remaining $1 million is anticipated to be adequate to cover some portion of our capital needs, any potential snow and ice deficit, and any unexpected expenses. The stabilization fund balance is currently $1 million, and this addition of $100,000 will provide a further strengthening of our reserves. Such reserves help bolster our bond rating and potentially lower our future borrowing costs. Also, just as a reminder, all requests to use money from the stabilization fund require two-thirds majority vote at town meeting.
That's money into or out of a stabilization fund. Stabilization fund is our rainy day fund. There any, was this the one Mr. Linghan wanted to speak on, or?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I just wanted to share a little bit of information around the stabilization fund. This is the history since 2002. We have made two withdrawals, the most recent being in 2014 for the King Philip School District of $97,916. Ironically, we received back from King Philip this year $97,500. We apparently over-allocated in our last budget vote, so we had a return deposit of $97,000. Ironically, almost the same amount we withdrew. We are asking to deposit another $100,000 into that account. We have two sources of funding associated with the reserves of the town. One is called free cash, one is called stabilization. The stabilization fund is the one that we really try not to touch, and as you can see, we've only touched it twice in the last 10 years. It is critical to our bond rating. I just want to restate that. We are constantly borrowing and rebonding, if you will, some of our debt, trying to take advantage of lower interest rates, and the higher our bond rating, the lower interest rate we pay. And as you can see, this is the history of our bond rating. In 2008, we were A+, and we have been upgraded twice since then, which for a small town like Norfolk with the amount of budget and reserves that we have, double A+ is an extremely good rating. So I ask you to support this, and hopefully, we will continue to be able to make deposits to strengthen our reserves. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments on the transfer regarding stabilization? Seeing none, takes a two-thirds majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously. Article five.
Mr. Moderator, I move to indefinitely postpone article number five.
Any explanation?
Okay. The decision was made to wait until the annual town meeting in the spring to allow for adequate time to analyze and prepare an appropriate set of capital projects for the town to consider. The advisory committee agrees with this approach, as it will allow for full contemplation and debate of spending between operating budget and capital requests with a complete picture of town finances and to support such requests. There were a couple of time-sensitive capital expenditures, relatively modest in nature, that have been included within the transfers in article one.
Any questions or comments on article five? The motion is to dismiss or indefinitely postpone. Seeing no questions or comments, all those in favor of indefinite postponement of this article, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? It is indefinitely postponed. Article six.
Mr. Moderator, I move to approve article six as printed in the warrant with the following addition, which appears up on the screen. Quote, "And to further authorize the Board of Selectmen upon such terms and conditions as they deem to be in the best interest of the town to acquire any easements or other interest in the premises or property to effectuate the town's access to an operation of the wastewater treatment facility," end quote.
An explanation?
This is actually one of three articles that the advisory committee all supports regarding the acquisition of the wastewater treatment facility on Meeting House Road. After much discussion, we believe this is a net positive benefit to the town. The facility is in really good condition and would benefit both residential, commercial customers, and provide more revenue. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments, questions, right here?
Yes, Kevin Doolin, 13 Sweetland Farm Road. My concern is that I tried to speak with...
Yeah, if you could just come a little closer.
Matt Borelli in the Borelli Companies, and I'm concerned about, as far as, we have a certain person that chairs the Conservation Commission and is on the planning board and still owns a parcel of...
I'm going to want to, I really want you to stay away from that, anything about one person's decisions. If you have any questions or concerns about whether the town will take ownership of an easement or anything else like that, I'll take them, that's fair. I really don't want you to talk about what any specific person on a board may think or what their role may be.
My concern is that, why at this point, right, when the Borelli Companies still own land and are still going to build on this treatment facility, if someone can explain why at this point, probably eight years out, why does the town need to take control of this parcel? Because since then, it's been operating fine.
Thank you. And could you, can that microphone go up a little bit? I think people are going to be hunching all day. That's great. Mr. Hathaway?
Mr. Talaman, thank you. I don't think it's, it's not a, it's that we, it's not that we need to take this facility. There's two big reasons why I, as the town administrator, think we need to take this facility. One is because I think we can operate it at about a 20% discount over what Mr. Borelli is operating at, and he's running it similar to the way we would. Well, I should tell you the way we're going to run it. We're going to run it as an enterprise fund, so any revenues from the facility will be used, it'll be like our water department. So any revenues from the facility will be used to pay for the expenses from the facility to the facility. So this will not affect the general fund. Any upgrades to the facility will be paid for by the revenues from the facility. So we actually think we can have $100,000 annual budget, which is, which is lower than the Borelli $123,000 to $126,000 budget, and we can also put $10,000 more from that $100,000. We're going to take $20,000 and put that into a sinking fund or a capital reserve fund, if you will. So we're going to, we're going to plan for the 20, I can't remember if it's 2022 or 2024, when our permit expires for that facility, that we'll have to upgrade and meet new levels of output, if you will. So that's the one reason I think we can do it. We should take the facility is that we can operate this facility at a lower cost than Borelli, which will benefit the users. Also, not only the residential users from the condominiums that are there today, also Walgreens is on it, and all the undeveloped property from the old moonscape for you guys that have been around for a while, the commercial developers will be able to connect to that too, and we obviously want that, them to be able to connect at a reasonable fee, not have a management fee put on top of it that Mr. Borelli has at this time. So really, the, the cost savings, I think, is number one, and then the ability to inspire some commercial development is the second reason that I think the town should take this facility.
And, and just for the town meeting's benefit, when Mr. Hathaway says enterprise fund, that the users of the facility are paying for that, it doesn't go on the tax rolls. Is that, is that correct, Mr. Hathaway?
Correct.
Okay. Mr. Bakunowski? Unless you had a follow-up directly to that. I'd rather give someone, do you have a direct follow-up? Sure, go ahead, Kevin. Thank you.
Well, I'm very happy that the town is engaged in, because I've watched over the years on NCTV as far as how we kind of want to spur development in that town center, and nothing's happened yet, but what better way for the town to take over a municipal entity that a private developer who's in business to make money is willing to give this up, and the town thinks that we can make money and spur development? Because I've seen, two years ago in June, when we had how the vision would be as far as the town center, what would happen, and I haven't seen anything done, and I've been lived here for 20 years. So I'm not quite sure what taking over this facility would mean to the town, because it may be another 20 or 30 years before anything gets done. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Doolin. Mr. Bakunowski?
Andy Bakunowski, Nuggets Lake Avenue. Jack, I got a question for you. The DEP website says the permit expires in 2017, not 2021. So that's one question. I got a couple more. The easement, does that include the easements to the water tank? Because my understanding is that we currently have a payment associated with that. That would be nice if we could get that off the books. The other thing too is how much, how much are we talking about to acquire this, and where the finances? I mean, that's, that's the most frustrating thing. The other thing is the recommendation by the advisory board identified the plan as being good. Did anyone call DEP? The woman, Margot Weber, who actually was the, involved with the pilot study, said this system is running about 50%, or with 50% the equipment that it was originally designed with, because they've been cannibalizing one side of the process train to keep the other side going. So I wouldn't necessarily call that as good. Was an engineering study done? Was any, did anybody look at it?
One, before you start, I think I can help with that. There is no appropriation in this article, and there's no authority to take it, so I have to assume that someone is giving it, or it's not happening. So if people are thinking what it's going to cost, this town meeting would have to vote that money. Jack, can you help Andy out on any of those other questions?
I do. Actually, we have a couple gentlemen from Whitewater in the audience that did do a full inspection of the facility. You're right, there's, there's, there's two trains, and I won't, you know, I can go about this far, and then there's a whole bunch of stuff that I can't talk about, but there are, so there is part of the facility that is, well, let me back up a little bit. The facility is running 3,000 to 4,000 gallons per day. It's licensed for 30,000, so it's clearly not, they can't run both the sides of the facility. So they've shut down part of the facility. They did, they did cannibalize, to use your words, a pump from one side, I think, in the inspection report, to put over to the other side. So we have a plan to replace that, and then, you know, use the new pump under warranty, et cetera. But we did do a full inspection. There are some minor things, according to the report, that I think we would want to fix. There was nothing, they raided it in good condition. More than happy to have, if, if, if the town meeting, Mr. Moderator, is interested, I can have these folks speak more intelligently than I can.
But let's see what we have for more, more questions on it first. Andy, anything, any, did that answer your questions?
Sort of.
Okay. Do you have?
I mean, a ballpark figure of cost would be kind of nice, just so we kind of know what we're getting. I mean, not only me, but, I mean...
About $21,000 of repairs that they suggested was the full gamut of repairs.
Just a ballpark figure, working number, you know, whether it's, is it $100,000? Is it $200,000? Is it $1 million, $2 million? I just, I mean, I mean, just something, just something to call it, call it a warm and fuzzy feeling.
Do we have, do we have those figures?
Yeah, for the repairs, 21...
Just to acquire, I mean, to acquire and basically get the shop running.
Nothing to acquire, so it's going to be a gift. Mr. Borelli's not in the business of running wastewater treatment plant, so I think that's why he wants to get out. He's making, you know, he's got a management fee in his budget of $15,000 to $17,000, so that's what he's making. You know, to me, that's a nice bit of money, but, but maybe not to him. So he wants to get out, so he's gifting it to us. And then, as I said, the Whitewater report suggested, nothing was eminently on the verge of failing, but there are suggestions in their report of $21,000 of repairs that, that we should make in due course.
The only, only one other one was the easement to the water tank? That's it?
And that's an ongoing debate between the association and Mr. Borelli. As it stands today, we won't be able to avoid that, that easement. So there's an easement for us to cross association property and have, to get to the water tower to access the cell towers that are up there. That needs to get resolved between the association and Mr. Borelli first, and then we can have some discussions with the remaining party. We do have an alternative that we can access the water tower from the town hall parking lot, so if we continue to put more towers up there and drive the revenue up, which we then are, would in turn turn over to Mr. Borelli or the association, we have the alternative to, to build a, you know, a dirt driveway up from the town hall parking lot and avoid the need for that easement.
Thank you. Mr. Gibfry?
I'm not going to give up my time. I'd like to hear Whitewater speak first, and then...
There's nothing on the table for, I'm not going to, if there's no need for them to speak, if you have a technical question, I haven't heard any question that Jack hasn't been able to answer.
I wasn't sure who paid for them to do the study. That was one question. I have others. Can I add that first, and then I, then the series of questions will come after that?
Well, I, I believe unless Mr. Hathaway corrects me that they are a town consultant?
Correct.
Okay. Do you have a comment or a question specifically? I'm happy to hear it.
All right. I have a, an issue in that previously as being selectman during the time in which this occurred, the wastewater treatment plant, and conservation commissioner during this time, and seeing the, this being built and being permitted, and the problems that we had with the wastewater treatment plant, and how it had to be moved, and the trenches had to be moved in the process of getting something that worked. I'm concerned with getting something as a gift. It's almost like a Trojan horse. And I want to go back to something that happened with Mr. Borelli. We had an...
Only if it pertains to the wastewater treatment plant. I do not want to get into...
Well, it pertains to a behavior.
I don't want to hear about his behavior. If he did something with, if something during the construction happened, I understand your concerns, Jim, but I really want to keep it focused on the wastewater treatment plant. I understand your concerns.
I would like to hear from Conservation Commission in regards to this approval, and from the Board of Health in regards to the approval of the existing plant, and what were some of the problems during its process of being permitted.
Well, I, I'm, sir, if someone from the Concom or the Board of Health wants to speak, that's fine. I believe it's a DEP permit and not a Board of Health permit, but I defer to them. I'm not going to force them up, up to a mic. I'll take any comment they care to give. Sir?
Peter Diamond, 114 Main. I'd just like to ask, this says it's in good condition, and yet you're talking about $21,000 in repairs to upgrade it. I'd like an explanation on that.
Why don't we have one of our esteemed guests from Whitewater tell us about these repairs? Take Jack off the hook here. Introduce yourself.
My name is Jeremiah Murphy. I'm a manager of the wastewater division for Whitewater, who works with the town. Myself and a master electrician that works for Whitewater, and also Chris Hayward, who's another manager for Whitewater, spent the, probably about four or five hours going through the facility and did an assessment of all the different components. We work with a number of these amphidrom systems throughout the state. They work well. They're not, there's no problematic thing with their technology. It's a sound system that we operate quite a few residential, commercial complexes. The things that we wrote up in regards to repairs, really pretty typical things that you would find with a treatment plant that age, you know, some of the cost was just pumping out the pre-treatment tanks, which is a routine cost, part of the facility. But really, there's smart, minor components for hanging the floats that control the system. You know, there's small stainless steel brackets, calibration of the flow meter, some bulbs to be replaced on the UV system, which is, again, that's another routine maintenance thing that's typical of any wastewater treatment system.
Thank you. Any, any follow-up? Any other questions, comments, concerns on article six? Jim? Sure?
We talked about the permitting, again, coming up in 2017. My concern is the upgrades. I'd like to know what are the specific upgrades, since you already inspected this, and you should know roughly what's... Since you already inspected this, and you should know roughly what's going to be the upgrades needed, what will they be and what will be the cost if we take over the plant?
Oh, we're getting the whole company tonight.
Hi, I'm Chris Hayward. I'm a, like Jeremiah said, I'm a manager from Whitewater. I just want to make sure I understand the question. So it was, what upgrades are going to be required at the time of the new permit? Is that what your question was? Okay. So this is a permit that's issued by the Mass DEP, and the permits are required to be renewed every five years, and at the time of the fifteen-year renewal, a, there's a requirement to perform an engineering evaluation to determine the condition of the plant, and if any upgrades are required in order to keep it running until year twenty. So unless during the course of that engineering evaluation, specific items or processes are found to be failing or close to be failing, then there will be no specific upgrade required.
Okay. Can you tell us just, because I'm, I'm sure to, what is the lifespan generally for, for these systems? Just, I, I think that's some.
Well, the, the overall plant can run for, for decades. Individual components such as pumps, blowers, float switches, control devices, need to be changed out periodically throughout the lifetime of the plant. So, you know, a pump can last anywhere from five to ten years, same for a blower. So, you know, you can expect there to be ongoing repairs throughout, you know, the, the life of the system on a, on an annual basis, repairs or replacements.
Thank you. Any further questions, comments on Article Six? Do you have one here? Sure, yep, come right up to the mic. Take your time.
Eric Anderson, twenty-nine Needham Street. Would there be any obligation for the town to continue running the facility if it did acquire it? If it was a, a debt-creating ownership, or could it be shut down?
Jack, I'm sure Jack can answer that. My guess is we do have an obligation ongoing once we take it over.
Because we have forty-five active users on the facility, we would, I think the condominium owners would be very disappointed if we shut it down. We'd end up in a lawsuit. If I may, just back up just a little bit for history. This is part of a, a bigger picture. You know, we, we're mediating a lot of different things going on with Mr. Borelli, you know, getting roads paved, getting plantings done. Obviously, the association is interested in having driveways paved. So part of the mediation that the zoning board had with Mr. Borelli that I participated in, this is a result of, of that mediation. So we are, we have an end game to try and, I don't mean to be rude to any of our developers, but we're trying to get him moved out of town so that we can, we can get things done. So this was part of the, the process. We have a, we also have him turning over some funds, hopefully sooner rather than later, to have us pave Meeting House, the main course of Meeting House Road, which will eventually become the public way. He is obligated to sell the parcel of land that is across, sell or develop the parcel of land across from the condominiums. He has said that there's a ninety-nine percent likelihood that he will sell it. And when he does that, and there's a time certain that he has to make a decision what he's going to do, that's when he would turn over the funds for us to pave the, the main part of Meeting House Road. So I didn't want, you know, I, I think just to give you a little more perspective as to why this is, you know, this isn't, you know, in, in reality, as part of the deal, this really is him turning it over and, and gifting it to us and getting out. But it's also as part of the deal of him getting out of, he wants to get out of town, and frankly, we want him out of town. So happy to answer more questions as they come up.
Thank you. Mr. Fruntak?
Arthur Fruntak, fourteen Main Street. Just wanted to offer a perspective. A question was asked about sort of the plant being in good, good condition. I was probably about picking that word, so I just wanted to share just a minute about my process in coming to that conclusion. You know, we listen to experts, people who've done inspections and who have various committees. I also try to bring it back to personal experience. I have no expertise in wastewater treatment whatsoever. I am an IT operations manager, so we're regularly watching equipment for its lifespan. We are replacing things on periodic schedules all the time. And there are times when things are duds, or lemons, or bombs. I think someone used the word Trojan horse. Again, I'm not an expert, but what I was listening for is, over the operating history of this plant over ten to fifteen years, I, I have yet to have heard in all of the things that were presented that there's been some kind of outlier reason for concern, a bomb that went off. I mean, if there are Trojans in there waiting to pop out and take over the city, they've been in there for fifteen years, so that seems like a long time to wait. Again, not, can't always predict the future, but I drew comfort from the fact that it had an operating record, and everything seems to be what you would, excuse me, what you would expect with this type of an operation. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sneed?
Pat Sneed, nineteen Fredericksen Road. Just a quick reminder of a point that Mr. Hathaway made at the beginning, and that this is an enterprise fund like the water fund. These expenses that we're talking about will be paid by the users. They're not issues that will affect the town financially, but the problems will have to be paid for by the users of the system and whatever businesses are users of the system as well. So, so these are not town expenses we're talking about here.
Thank you, Mr. Sneed. Anybody else? Seeing no further comments. This requires just a majority vote because there is no appropriation for the easements. So, all those in favor of acquiring the wastewater treatment system or easements therein, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed? I think the ayes have it. It does pass. Article seven.
Mr. Moderator, I move to approve Article Seven as printed in the warrant.
And brief explanation?
This actually creates the enterprise fund that folks were just talking about to contain the expense, shield the town, generally speaking, and as necessary to maintain and operate the facility. Thank you.
Any comments, questions about how this works? This goes along with the prior article. Mr. Gibfried?
I just have a question to try to understand the types of development in town that may now be allowed to be built in town, because there's now a system available which will then go into spending and recouping any funds or anything that had to be done in the enterprise fund. So does this change the types of dwellings or structures, operations that can exist in town that will be going into, pay into this enterprise fund?
My understanding, unless Mr. Hathaway wants to speak to this, is no, that there are a finite number of users that have rights to this facility, and those users, regardless of what type of use it has to be in allowed use, have the right to access the system, and if they're using it, they're going to be paying for it. Is that correct, Mr. Hathaway?
That's correct. And I would just add on to that. Just, obviously, under zoning, they're, they're allowed to build what they're allowed to build. And this, this is an accounting mechanism, but whether or not we own it, or Mr. Borelli owns it, they're allowed to build in the V1 district and in this particular parcels. But then also, it's under the zoning Board of Appeals special permit is what runs this facility, too. So if they're going to make any changes to that, there would have to be a public hearing through the zoning board to make changes to what is allowed to connect, or what parcels are allowed to connect.
Any other questions, comments on Article Seven for the creation of an enterprise fund? Right here, question.
John Newhivian, Noel Drive. I just had a question. Are we going to appropriate any money to put into this fund initially?
Hang on, I think that's coming next article.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none. This requires a majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed? It passes unanimously. Mr. Fruntak, Article Eight?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to approve a budget for the wastewater treatment facility, and raise and appropriate and transfer from available funds the sum of fifty thousand dollars, therefore, as shown on the budget outlined presented to this town meeting. You can see up on the screen the particulars of the proposed budget, which Jack will now speak to. Thank you.
Mr. Hathaway?
It's relatively straightforward, but operating and engineering, we would, we would have one of our consultants, likely Whitewater, operate the facility. Whitewater operates a portion of our potable water system today, along with our water department employees. So we would extend their contract to include the wastewater. Equipment and system repairs, that would handle six months of what we would start handling of the, of the repairs that Whitewater's already outlined for us. Utility costs, electricity is obviously a big hit to that draw, if you will. We think actually with our solar system and the, the energy that we get, this number is probably a little high, but I want to start a little high rather than run short. The DEP permit, we believe is going to be seven thousand dollars. And then, as I talked about, so now this is six months, so we're talking about taking six months and putting eleven thousand dollars of revenues into capital reserve to prepare for the, the time that we've talked about a couple of times. We get to that fifteen-year mark, and we have, if we have to make an upgrade to the facility, we have those reserves in place. So we're looking at fifty thousand dollars to run the facility from January first to June thirtieth.
And then we pick up the rest at, at the annual town meeting? Mr. Gibfried, follow-up?
Can you give me an idea what's the additional cost, liability, insurance, insurance on this operation that we have to incur as a cost?
We believe it's about a thousand dollars.
Any further questions, comments, concerns? Right here, Mr. Byron?
Walter Byron, eighty Fruit Street. Jack, just one more sentence, which is, which, which bucket is the fifty thousand coming out of?
Mr. Moderator, if I may. So this is going to come from the revenues. So the revenues that we will collect over the next six months from the users, again, it's the condominium users and Walgreens.
Okay, so this is not a, a kicker starter fund which we've come up with out of our pocket from some other place?
Nope, correct. And I, and one thing I neglected to talk about was we inherit about sixty-nine thousand dollars of reserves when we take over this facility as well.
Any further questions, comments? Seeing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed? Unanimous. Mr. Fruntak?
Article nine, Mr. Moderator, I approve, I move to approve Article Nine as printed in the warrant.
This is a home rule petition regarding the fire chief's retirement date. Can you, any explanation?
Chief Bushnell has served since two thousand and four with great ability. The selectmen have requested, and the advisory committee supports, the extension of his employment up to twenty nineteen at the selectmen's discretion.
And this is because there is a period of time within which by law he would have to retire? Okay, so this is an extension of that, and a special act of the legislature, which this seeks, is special authority that we would submit to our local legislative team, and they operate to try and get passage of.
It's also our understanding that other towns have done this type of thing. It's not unique.
Any comments, questions? Mr. Gibfried?
I support the fire chief as well, and I think it's great that he's willing to extend himself, and the selectmen are also willing to work with him. I just had two questions. One, an explanation of what's the superannuation retirement allowance? What, what that accumulates to in case there is a change, for whatever reason. For instance, God forbid that something happens and he becomes injured during fighting a fire, and is no longer to be a chief and therefore retires. What, what cost would that, what would occur to, to the town?
Mr. Hathaway, if you can?
So the way this process will work, and I think this will answer your question, is, so when, when, and this is for the next question as well, when the chiefs reach age sixty-five, they will no longer contribute into the retirement fund. And then they'll work for as long as the selectman contract with them, or until their seventieth birthday, whichever comes first. The superannuation and retirement allowance basically just means when they do retire, they're going to receive what they should have received at the age of sixty-five. So they're not going to receive retirement benefits from age sixty-five until, as long as they keep working, but they're also not going to be contributing into the retirement fund. So it's basically going to take a snapshot of their retirement at that point, and then they'll keep working, they'll earn a paycheck. And then when they retire, they'll, they'll receive their benefit as if they were retiring at their, at their date, which is age sixty-five.
Any other questions? Seeing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed? It does pass unanimously. Article ten, similar for the police chief. Mr. Fruntak?
Mr. Moderator, I move to approve Article Ten as printed in the warrant. Norfolk Police Chief Stone is also approaching his contractual retirement age. He's served since nineteen seventy-six. We would love to keep him. The selectmen have requested it. Advisory committee supports extending his employment out to twenty twenty-two at the selectmen's discretion. Thank you.
Any comments, questions regarding the special act for Chief Stone? Seeing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed? Passes unanimously. Article eleven.
Mr. Moderator, I move to approve Article Eleven as printed in the warrant.
Any explanation here?
So this article is to effectively exempt service animals from pay, for people with service animals from having to pay the annual dog licensing fees. So not going to be a large, obviously a large financial cost to the town, and its many communities have adopted this provision of state law, so we're proposing to adopt it as well.
I believe, I, I think this is the article regarding no fee being charged for a license for a dog owned by a person aged seventy years or over?
Apologies, not just service animals, any animal for any person over age seventy.
Okay. Got that straight. Any questions or comments about this, providing an exemption here for those over seventy for dog licenses? Questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed? It does pass unanimously. Article twelve, amendment of a zoning bylaw. Mr. Sneed?
Mr. Moderator, I move to approve Article Twelve as printed in the warrant.
Any explanation?
This is simply a cleanup of the, this particular zoning bylaw. It's combining two similar articles into a single article. And it's just a heads up for what's coming. The, the town planner, a new town planner has been reviewing the zoning bylaws, and there are a number of these kinds of technical and cleanup kinds of provisions we'll be hearing tonight, and most likely in future town meetings. So just, this is part of an ongoing process, and this is the first of, of a few of these kinds of things you'll be hearing tonight.
It is a zoning bylaw amendment, so we need a recommendation from the planning board. Is, who here is representing the planning board in this? I see a couple members. We got a volunteer? Mr. Byron?
The planning board recommends approval of this article, and to save myself a few trips, which I probably can't.
You cannot.
All the rest of them at the same time.
I'll, I'll let you do it, I'll let you do it from your seat. I'll let you do it, I'll let you do it from your seat next time. All right. Zoning bylaw amendments also require two-thirds votes. Any other questions about this article or what it does, what it is? Seeing none, requires a two-thirds majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed? It passes unanimously. Article 13, another zoning bylaw. Mr. Sneed.
Mr. Moderator, I move to approve Article 13 as printed in the warrant.
And any explanation here?
This one is just a title change. It does not change any of the substance of the article. It's for just clarity and for consistency with other articles.
How do you feel about this one, Mr. Byron?
I think the planning board recommends approval of this article.
Great. Any questions about this article? Seeing none, requires two-thirds vote. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed? It does pass unanimously. 14.
Mr. Moderator, I move to approve Article 14 as printed in the warrant to amend section D dot two dot B of the zoning bylaws.
Okay, any explanation on this one?
This one actually is an article of substance. Right now, we have no restriction on any resident putting solar panels anyplace on their property. A consequence of that has been that there have been a few situations where we've had solar panels put right on, right on the borderline between two properties, for example. This article would change that restriction so that anything that is not roof mounted or any wind power generating facility would require a special permit. It does not affect anybody's ability to put solar panels on the roof of their house, but any other sighting on the property would require a special permit.
How's the planning board feel about this one, Mr. Byron?
The planning board recommends approval of this article.
Terrific. Question?
Yes, Jeff Burkner, 3 Wampanoag Ave. As printed in the warrant, it says D two C as in Charlie, and the table says D two B as in boy.
That's why I believe in the motion, he made a correction to the B.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for catching that. Any other questions? Right here.
Bob Pasky, 22 Stop River Road. Is it typical when passing these kind of warrants to not stipulate and specify what the restrictions might be in the future? Are there any zoning bylaws that exist now that don't really have specificity with respect to what restrictions might be put in place or approved or not approved? My concern is, is that you make up the rules as you go. Someone comes and says, "We want to put this in," you approve or disapprove the installation of solar panels on, you know, their front lawn or something like that. Next person comes along and the zoning board says, or the planning commission says, "No, you're not allowed," and yet there's no specificity with respect to what you're allowed to and not to do. Right now, that does exist. For example, if I were to put a shed in my backyard, there's certain setbacks, size, et cetera, for what can be done. Where it appears here, we're passing something and say, "We'll set the rules later."
I guess, and I think Mr. Bullock could tell me something different, is that they probably constitute a structure that would require some setbacks for the ground-mounted solar, and that because it requires a special permit, there's a lot of discretion by the, by the board that has to issue that special permit. But, Mr. Bullock, our building commissioner, by the way.
Thank you. As far as this article goes, we, the reason we put it in there was so that when someone comes, right now, they could actually go in and put solar in by right anywhere on their property. What we're finding is the neighbors all of a sudden would find out, once the solar went in, that, you know, now they have solar right on their property line between the two properties, and they have a problem with it. With the special permit, they're going to be notified before their neighbor goes and puts in the solar panels. At least they can at least air their concerns about why these, you know, should or shouldn't go in. The other aspects of the special permit, generally, they're always going to take into consideration the neighborhood, you know, the aesthetics of the, of the project that's going in. They, I don't believe that they can actually deny it. They just can condition it so that it at least fits into the neighborhood better than just allowing it by right.
Thank you. And I think one thing that he's referring to there is that solar facilities, commercial solar facilities anyway, get certain exemptions under law. But by imposing a special permit process, we're at least able to have some say in where it goes, what they look like and otherwise. Solar is difficult to say no to. I'll say that. But by creating a process here rather than making it by right, there is some controls. Mr. Bullock, could you tell me whether or not there are structures that would have to comply with setbacks, a ground-mounted? I believe that was a question the gentleman asked.
I don't believe that they are structures because there is no foundation to these. They, they're basically placed on the ground, not like a typical, you know, foundation or anything. But, you know, with a lot of things in zoning, people can argue both ways. But typically, I haven't seen them as, as a structure.
Perhaps not entirely definitive on that question, but the special permit process does provide a lot of discretion. If a, if a board felt it was too close to a lot line, at the very least, they'd have some controls and the public would have options to comment there. Sir, question?
Good evening. My name is Marcelo Santone, 5 Lincoln Road. We've talked about the solar panels. How about wind turbines? If I want to put a wind turbine on my, on my property, what restricts me? And it's going to be a base mount.
I don't know the, the local bylaw for wind turbines. It's not covered under this particular article. If we can answer that really quickly for the gentleman, fine. Otherwise, this is about solar panels.
Wind energy is covered by this article.
Okay, oh, it is?
Yes.
Wind energy systems, okay. Special permits required for those. Same standard. Board has to review it and approve it. Any further questions, comments? Seeing none, this is a zoning article, requires two-thirds vote. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed? It does, in my opinion, pass by two-thirds vote. Article 15.
Mr. Moderator, I move to approve Article 15 as printed in the warrant.
And what does this bylaw amendment do, Mr. Sneed?
It is simply elimination of a redundant item. This, the use that's indicated here is prohibited elsewhere in the zoning bylaws, and this, this is simply being deleted as unnecessary.
Planning board.
The planning board recommends approval of this article.
Any comments, questions, further discussion on Article 15? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye. All those opposed? It passes unanimously. Ms. Keating.
In Article 16, we move that the, you approve the Article 16 as printed in the warrant.
Another zoning bylaw. Any explanation on this one?
This is, as a result of a particular issue that arose regarding the effective date of the zoning bylaws, it was determined that the effective date currently in the bylaws is incorrect, and this changes and corrects that error.
So, going from it's currently states 1968, and we've discovered that it's actually 1953, is that right?
I believe so. I believe so, yes.
Mr. Byron.
The planning board recommends approval of this article.
Thank you. Any comments, questions on Article 16? Mr. Diamond?
Peter Diamond, Seacong Street. What supporting information do you have that the zoning bylaws were approved in 1953?
I don't know the answer to that. I'm guessing town records. Anyone have any info on that?
I asked the same question, and I was told that they did research it, in that they found that the date was incorrect, and they issued the correct date.
Looks like Mr. Bullock's eager to fill us in.
I've been here a little over 13 years, and we've used March 16th, 1953, from that, from that point forward. It was researched, it was researched actually with Frank Gross that used to be the moderator and attorney in town. It was also recently researched by Copelman and Page, just to reinforce the, the dates that we have. So, there is a letter that she sent to the town, you know, acknowledging that date, March 16th, 1953.
Thank you, Mr. Bullock. Any further questions, comments on this article? Right back here.
My question is, oh, sorry, John Newhivian, 3 Noel Drive. My question is, does this impact any current properties if we move the date back to 1953?
I, I don't believe so. All those would be measured on, on their own merits when they came in, into being. It is really just housekeeping and more for public notice than anything else. Seeing no further questions or comments, requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed? Passes unanimously. Article 17, a zoning bylaw regarding kennels, I believe.
Mr. Moderator, we move to approve Article 17 as printed in the warrant with the following clerical corrections in the definition of kennel, personal. Insert the words as between, as between such and breeding in line five, and change the word temporarily in line nine to temporarily. This article sets out definitions to be used in the implementation of the town's kennel bylaw. These definitions are the same or similar to those found in the applicable state law.
Okay, that last part was the explanation, not part, part of the, the motion. That's okay. Question?
I would make a comment.
Please.
Cindy Idell, 117 Seacong. I, I move, Mr. Moderator, to postpone Article 17. We own a doggy playgroup that is a home business, and when we open-
Let's just wait one second. So, there's a, I'm going to treat that as a motion to substitute, unless you want to just speak against the article. If you want to change the motion to a motion to indefinitely postpone or dismiss it, you can do that too, or you can just speak out against it. So, I want to understand what you want to do here.
I think what I want to first do is get it temporarily postponed to add a definition of a doggy playgroup. Nowhere in the definition of kennels does it talk about a, a doggy playgroup, which is different than the definitions that are being given in this article. And so, I move to postpone it so that we can talk with the town to add a definition for a doggy playgroup. The way it stands now-
Okay, so, just, I just want to get this procedurally right. By doing that, you're essentially, and just because this is the way town meeting works, you're essentially moving to postpone it, or if you lay it on the table, or there's a number of different devices. But if we postpone it, it's, it's the same thing as essentially a motion to defeat it for the, for the time being. Unless you wanted to lay it on the table, go out in the hallway and discuss an amendment right now with it, in which case we could pick it back up before the end of town meeting. So, it's your call. I don't want to tell you which to do. So, obviously, that takes a little bit of work and, and requires a little finesse. So, I just want to make sure that you get exactly what you want here by your motion. If you think we need more time till the spring, then you should probably want to go with your motion to postpone.
Is there, is there a difference between a motion to postpone versus going to talk to some of the town members outside here to get it resolved today?
If you wanted to do that, I would say a motion to lay on the table, and then if that was, if that motion was approved, then you could head back, head out, and then make a motion to take it off the table when we get in between some other articles later, if that's what, if that's what you'd like to try and do.
Sure. I would like to make a motion to post, to lay it on the table.
To lay it on the table. Okay, do I have a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay, we have a, this, it's not debatable, and it requires a two-thirds vote to lay it on the table. Any other discussion on this? Mr. Weider. Actually, this is, the question itself is not debatable. So-
I guess the point of, question at definition, the definition of a commercial kennel.
All right, so we, right now, I have another motion on the floor. So, I'm going to hold you there for a minute. So, we're either going to lay this on the table, or we're not going to lay it on the table, and then we can get in, into questions, just a little bit. Sorry about the parliamentary procedure. It's just the way it goes. All right, so, unless, I think we're ready to get to a vote here on laying it on the table. So, all those in favor of laying this on the table, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed?
No.
I don't think it got a two-thirds vote to lay it on the table. Now, there are other devices. If you want to do a motion to amend, you can do that too. So, but you have only, you have a short period of time while we're, while we're discussing this.
Do you want to count? Because to me, it sounded like there was-
Well, I, if seven people want to count that, again, it required a two-thirds vote. If it was just a majority, I think I would have counted it, but it would have required a two-thirds vote. If there's seven people that want me to count it, I'll count it. But I didn't, I didn't hear two-thirds there. So, why don't we just, to, to help you out, seeing that motion was defeated, give you, give you a minute to kind of gather what you want to do. I think we had a question here. We're back to the main issue. Chris, do you have a, a comment or a question on, on this article?
Just a comment. The state law for a commercial kennel includes daycare. So, I think, and that also includes playgroups. It does include doggy daycares, and that's why it's in the commercial kennel definition.
So, I don't know if that, if that helps you or not. I, I take it that it does. I'm not doubting that it says that. I will point out that I, I believe a lot of the changes to these kennel articles are as a result of some changes in, in state laws, my understanding as well. I believe town council could probably can confirm that a little bit. There's been a lot of changes in the statutes.
Mr. Moderator, just to confirm, these definitions are based on the recent amendments to the provisions of the general laws dealing with dogs and kennels.
I-
Pardon me?
You're on.
This article reflects changes that have been made to the general laws with respect to the issue of dogs and kennels. And so, these definitions are based on the language of the statute.
Can I make a comment, please?
You may.
In, in previous regulations, kennel wasn't defined. There was no distinction in that also, the difference between commercial and, and personal. When we moved to Norfolk three years ago, we talked to town representatives, read the zoning laws, and didn't find any exceptions that would not allow a doggy playgroup in a residential neighborhood. And the business has been there three years, over three years, without any complaints. And just adding these new regulations, maybe they're in the Massachusetts State Legislature, but by adding this, it could put our business out of business. And it's a, it's a home business. It's done only from 10 to 2 during the day. There's no overnight in this. And a lot of money was spent to put in two fenced-in areas in the yard for it.
So, I see that in this definition for kennel, commercial boarding or training, that it does include daycare. Is that not sufficient to meet your concerns?
No, because it's not a full day, you know. It, there is only four hours the business is in operation in the house, and it's during the day when most people aren't at home. There is no traffic that goes in and out of the driveway. The owners of the business pick up the dogs and bring them to the house. And so, there's not any different changes in traffic patterns to get into the business. There's no overnight care in the business. And by putting in regulations like this, after being in business for over three years, it could put us out of business if we can't get a special exception.
Okay, so, what, what I think you need to think about, and there's one, two, three more people that need to speak, is if you want to insert some words under the definition, kennel, commercial boarding or training, I think you want to do that by an amendment to the motion that's on the floor. If you want to insert- to the motion that's on the floor. If you want to insert a couple of words there. So I can't tell you what language to add there, but why don't we get to a couple of the other speakers? And then if you want to do a motion, I move to amend by, and we have forms here where you could write it down, then I think that might be a way to go for you. Mr. Frunzak.
Arthur Frunzak, 14 Main Street. I think I heard the town attorney explain that this motion, this proposed article, will match what the state law currently is. And if that's the case, I'm wondering, to perhaps ask a question beyond that. I appreciate the fact that it may match, but in the town attorney's understanding, would this scenario being described be covered or not?
I think it's within the scope of the article, and I think the town is free to insert that language in a bylaw to expand, as long as we don't do something less restrictive than the state. I think we're okay there. So again, we don't have an amendment on the floor, so it's just for discussion purposes.
My understanding is the question, somebody asserted that it's already covered, and I just wanted to see if, without an amendment, that it's already covered.
I'm a little reluctant to put Mr. Dineski on the spot as to whether or not a doggy playgroup is within that definition. But if he knows, great. If not, then it is a kind of oddball question to throw at town council's way.
Mr. Moderator, just for the record, it's not a term I have heard before, and without having a description of the activity or language being offered, I could not, as you suggest, offer an opinion on whether it is within the scope of the proposal.
I think that, given the circumstances, it is kind of a unique question. I think that's the best that we could hope for here. I think Mr. Sneed was next.
Yes, and this point may have already been made. I'm not sure what definition is covering what at this point. But in our discussion, I recall that existing businesses were not subject to these new requirements, that they were grandfathered. And secondly, I believe the previous speaker indicated that he believed, at least, that doggy daycare did come under these definitions, and therefore, to the extent there is an exemption to an existing business, then presumably, that would also apply here. Now, that's just following the logic of those statements. I'm not sure if that's necessarily legally correct answer.
I believe that makes some amount of sense. So let me explain that just a little bit. If you are a use that is legal under the zoning bylaws, and I don't know what the zoning bylaws currently allow, and the zoning bylaws are changed to make it more restrictive and zone you out, you get to continue it as a grandfathered use. The only limitation on that is if you want to change it, expand it, or whatever, you're going to have to get authority of the Zoning Board of Appeals. So there is some solace to be taken in that. But new uses, a new doggy playgroup use somewhere else, if you're right, that this excludes it, would be excluded. So there, you may have some grandfathering there. Mr. Weider?
Also, the bylaw, or the zoning change, does not prevent you from getting a commercial kennel license. It just requires you to get a special permit by the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Now you did it.
Okay, my name is Ron Ober on Main Street in Norfolk, 69 Main Street. I had a similar question. I think the gentleman answered in regard to grandfathering. My question is, and I did get some advice, I thought of the question, and that was the grandfathering of an existing operation of someone here just mentioned, okay, may be exempt from a use that has existed for more than a decade or two or three, okay?
Correct.
Dealing with this. Okay. I think, you know, stud might be a pretty good idea, even though these regs came down from the state, studying it a little further. And she had a real good suggestion, because I never heard the term either playgroup or something, right? But I'm involved in training, and, you know, I look at it as a real public service for those who really want to educate their dogs. And the fact of the matter is, I've been doing it for a long time, and I think grandfathering is certainly warranted for that activity. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, you're back.
I am. I'm just going to make a motion to amend, to see if it would pass, to allow a doggy playgroup for less than five hours a day during daylight hours.
Okay, so-
Insert that into the-
Insert that, so might I, so would be, insert that in the definition of kennel, commercial boarding, or training?
Right.
And it would be, and Ms. Green, our town clerk, is going to need this in writing. But it would be a motion to amend to include the language doggy playgroup, or dog playgroup, for-
For less than five hours a day during daylight hours.
Okay, all right. So that is a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Motions to amend are debatable if we want to have any further debate on this particular topic. Mr. Bennett?
Dave Benton, three Perrigo Lane. I would be against this amendment on the grounds that, I think daycare is pretty clear that you're keeping some set of dogs, whether they're playing, sleeping, lying, whatever. That's daycare. So I really don't think we need this amendment. I think the definition in the proposed article is fine.
Ms. Wayne?
Angela Wayne, 13 Midway Branch. I think I would just echo what Dave said, that, you know, the use of other doggy daycares within the town, I think, accomplished the same sort of opportunity for the playgroup. So I think I would be challenged to see how we would actually draw a line between the definition of the two uses based on, to me, it just seems to add complication where there may not be a clear division of which is which.
Terrific. I think the gentleman behind you was first. Just because you're on the advisory board doesn't mean you can butt in and whatever you want.
I don't know if this is allowed or an appropriate time to insert or to delete training in an amendment.
Well, I have a motion to amend on the floor. I'm not sure you want to eliminate training, but in any event, but not under what we have currently on the floor. We're discussing the motion to amend to add this woman's new language. If you have another motion to amend after, we'll consider that. Mr. Frunzak?
I'll wait. Arthur Frunzak, 14 Main Street. Happy to get in the back of the line. I think what I hear with the petitioners is a certain concern of a risk of what might happen. I haven't heard anything on the other side of the equation to alleviate that risk. People think that maybe it will cover, perhaps their concerns are covered as a daycare operation, perhaps they're not. In lieu of the risk actually being able to be verified or not, I support the motion. Thank you.
Terrific. Anything else just on the motion to amend?
I think inserting in a commercial kennel, the word playgroup, doesn't change anything. It's going to go to the Zoning Board of Appeals as a special permit. If it's a playgroup or a daycare, the Zoning Board of Appeals is probably going to look at it the exact same way. So I don't think there's any need to change the language, because again, if a playgroup comes to the Zoning Board of Appeals, which I sit on, we are going to look at it as a daycare. We are not going to distinguish between a daycare and a playgroup.
And just so, what Mr. Weider is saying is, kennel, commercial kennels, and I think this is going to be Article 18, are going to require a special permit under the amendments contemplated. So, we're still on the amendment. Anything else just on the amendment? Like to get this to a vote. One last comment, just on the amendment now.
I guess I'm a little concerned if we amend it on the fly, we might cause a problem. And we could always amend it later. But my question or comment is, I haven't seen anything here that prohibits a doggy playgroup. Can anybody comment on that specifically?
I'll comment on that just briefly. If something is not listed in your zoning bylaw as allowed, then it's prohibited. So it either has to be allowed, allowed by special permit, and if it's not, if it's silent in your zoning bylaws and it's not otherwise covered, then it's prohibited. So just for that perspective.
But it's daycare, right?
Again, I don't know the definition of doggy daycare. I do the same thing for a living that Mr. Dineski does. I couldn't pull that one out of my hat either. So. All right, I think we're ready to vote on the amendment. This requires a majority vote. Just make sure. Yes, just a majority vote. All those in favor of the amendment-
Mr. Moderator, one moment. Is there a point within the language where this text is proposed to be inserted?
My thought is that it would, I specified in the definition, how about right after daycare? Seems like as good a spot as any. No, it's right after. It's going to be inserted there. I think that's a good spot for it. So I'll take that as a friendly amendment to the motion to amend. All those in favor of the motion to amend, please say aye. All those opposed?
No.
Okay, the motion to amend fails. We're back to the main motion, which is as printed in the warrant, with the exceptions noted in the motion itself, which were just typos, I believe, for the most part. Anyone have any further comments or questions on the main motion, which is to add a bunch of language regarding definitions of kennels? It'll set up some of the later articles here. Seeing no further questions or comments, this requires a two-thirds vote. Actually, wait, did I ask the planning board if they're in favor of this?
The planning board is in favor of the motion.
Terrific, thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
It passes by two-thirds vote. Article 18, related, I believe.
Yes, it is. Mr. Moderator, I move to approve Article 18 as printed in the warrant.
And an explanation?
This article allows personal kennels in all districts without a special permit. This article establishes requirements for commercial kennels in certain districts. Existing commercial kennels would be grandfathered.
Okay. Questions? Come on down.
Mr. Moderator, I would like to make a motion to make a dimensional variance to this article by decreasing the amount of acres and the amount of feet to the property line and dwellings.
I think maybe you've jumped ahead. What's that?
There.
Oh, okay, right there. Okay, I'm sorry. Yep. So you want to make a change to-
I want to make a-
Under commercial uses, where it says five acres of lands, kennel enclosures must be at least 100 feet to property line and 500 feet to neighboring dwellings?
Correct.
And you want to change that to what?
I want to change it to four acres of land and 50 feet to the property line and 50 feet to neighboring dwellings.
50 feet to neighboring dwellings. Again, recognizing that you, if you operate a facility that's grandfathered, you potentially already have those, this bylaw couldn't change that, dimensionals or otherwise. If you're grandfathered, you're grandfathered.
The problem is, is that if the business was not, did not get a permit, whether it would be allowed to be grandfathered in, that's the issue.
If it was, if it's a legal use, whether or not it has a permit, if it's legally existing, then you're grandfathered. If previous to the bylaw, you didn't need a permit, and it was allowed as a matter of right, for example, you would be grandfathered. If you have an illegal use now, it's not grandfathered.
That's right. And when I talked to someone yesterday about this, they said that a kennel was required to get a permit, only because of the way the zoning law is written. If it didn't specifically identify something, then you needed to get it if it wasn't specifically identified that you didn't need it. And because of that, it might be perhaps that we should have gotten a permit and didn't know it, because the definition of what a kennel was wasn't in the zoning laws at that point.
And I'm not, and I'm not going to put Mr. Bullock on the spot to opine as to whether or not what you have is grandfathered or not. I'm just going to have to take your word for it. So our town clerk is going to, if you could, again, so just for the sake, then we'll need a second. You want to, in those dimensionals, change it to four acres and 50 feet and 50 feet, where we see 100 feet and 500 feet, correct?
Correct.
That is your motion to amend?
Yes, it is.
Do I have a second for that?
Can I make a change to scope for that change? I suggest something with a four acre possible, that's what we hear, with four acres and that part.
It's a, it is a good point, Mr. Weddleton, on that. I think that I do have some concerns on, not on the four acres. I think the, going from five to four, in my opinion, would be within scope. But, so let's hold on here for a second. However, going from 500 to 50 feet, I think is a reasonable point of order to make. I could go 100 to 50, but 500 to 50, which is 10% of it, is, I think, beyond scope. So Ms., I'm sorry, I didn't get your name. I think that what happened here is Mr. Weddleton in the back raised a point of order, and what that means is, he challenged the scope of your amendment. If you're changing something so differently that's in the warrant, that someone outside of town meeting might have wanted to be here, then I can't consider that question. So what he suggested is that the going from five to four acres and 100 feet to 50 feet and 500 feet to 50 feet is beyond the scope. I would rule, as moderator, that five to four is okay, and 100 to 50 is okay. It's generally the same. But going from 500 to 50 is too much of a reduction, and I think that would be something that other people might want to know. So if that's your motion to amend, I cannot include that.
Include that.
I would, I would accept that. So that, I'll take that as a friendly amendment to your motion to amend, and see if there's a second to that.
What was your-
I'm sorry, is there a second?
What was your-
So that it is now from five to four acres, 100 to 50 feet, and 500 to 300 feet. That is the motion to amend on the floor here. That's changing those things on the left side of the screen there, from five to four acres, next line down, 100 feet to 50 feet, next line down, 500 feet to 300 feet. Do I have a second? It requires a second.
Second.
I have a second. Any discussion on the motion to amend?
Can I ask where we got the original five acres on 100 and 500 feet? Did they come from the Mass General laws, or did we come up with them based on something that we have within the town bylaws?
I do not know about that from the Mass General laws, if town council has it handy. I don't believe it is in the, in the Mass General-
No, Mr. Moderator, this is not based on-
This is a dimensional thing that is, came up locally. Sir?
Hi, Jeff Burkner, a point of order. I don't think it's the amount that you're reducing it that's important here. I think it's that you're reducing the 100 feet and the 500 feet, because say, a resident lived within 150 feet of something that was going to be happening, being discussed here, and they said, well, 500 feet, it's fine, I don't have to really go. But if you start reducing this, then you don't give the opportunity to such a neighbor to be here tonight.
I understand your point entirely, and I just, I believe it is within the scope to go from 100 to 50 and 500 to 300. I think there's enough notice so that people have an idea of what the concerns could be about setbacks. So I'm going to overrule that point of order, with the exception that I already said on the, on the 50 feet that Mr. Weddleton brought up earlier. Mr. Weider, on the motion to amend?
Do you answer the question with regard to the five acres? That was determined by the Zoning Board of Appeals, the five acres, 100 feet and 500 feet.
Terrific. Thank you, Chris. Okay, so we have a motion to amend on the floor. Anything else? Seeing, this requires a majority vote to amend it. All those in favor of the motion to amend, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Closer, but that one did not pass either. So the motion to amend fails. Okay, we're back to the main motion on this one. Any further questions on the main motion here? Sets forth some special permit criteria and some dimensional criteria. Seeing none, again- Seeing none, again, planning board recommendation.
Planning board recommends approval with regard to.
Planning board recommends, requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
It passes by a two-thirds vote. Article 19.
Mr. Moderator, I move to approve Article 19 as printed in the warrant.
Again, kennel related, I believe, Ms. Keating?
Yes, it is.
Okay, any explanation here?
This article adds the words "commercial boarding or training," kennels, "commercial breeder," to the special permit uses to be allowed by the Zoning Board of Appeals under Section J 7A, and is needed if Articles 17 and 18 are adopted.
Thank you. Any questions? Well, planning board first, how does the planning board feel on this one?
Planning board recommends approval with regard to.
Questions on this article? Just adding some definitions here. Seeing no questions or comments, all those in favor, requires two-thirds vote, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes by two-thirds. Article 20.
Kennel related again.
Kennel related. You're a kennel gal tonight.
Mr. Moderator, I move to approve Article 20 as printed in the warrant.
Any explanation on this one?
This article adds personal kennels as an approved use under Section J 7A 2A, by adding the word "personal" after the word "kennel" in the bylaw, and is needed if Articles 17 and 18 are adopted.
Planning board.
Planning board recommends approval with regard to.
Any comments, questions? Looks like more cleanup here. Seeing no comments or questions on this, also requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? It does pass. Article 21.
Mr. Moderator, would you just simply declare that it passed by two-thirds vote?
Yes, it passed by two-thirds. Article 21.
Mr. Moderator, I move to approve Article 21 as printed. The advisory committee unanimously approved the Board of Selectments' proposed update of the temporary moratorium language. The revised language is necessary to reflect the updates at the state level. This article is consistent with other communities in establishing a particular area of town where marijuana dispensary, if licensed by the Massachusetts Department of Public Health, would be able to do business. If approved, this zoning bylaw would require any potential marijuana business to be located in the adult business and marijuana overlay district of the C-1C District, Sherwood Drive and David Road, and helps control where any such future business may be located. And I think the point of this was that the town had a feeling that they didn't want it downtown, they didn't want it near a school, they want it in a particular area of town. So that's how we moved on that.
So we're replacing, in other words, a temporary moratorium, which we had, with some regulations and restrictions and permit requirements for marijuana facilities. Planning board.
Planning board recommends approval with regard to.
Comments, questions on Article 21? Ms. Whitney.
Elizabeth Whitney, 26 Valley Street, Ponville. I'm certainly in favor of the article. It, when, who decides that the RMD? Is it like a builder says, gee, I'd like to construct one for when it's necessary? Or does the state say, it's time? I wasn't sure who initiated it.
Hi, Rick Stillman, Lake Street. The Department of Public Health has to approve these. It's a huge process. It's a very long, drawn-out process. So far in the state of Massachusetts, there are only 11 dispensaries that have been approved. There are a couple others that are in the works. I seriously doubt Norfolk will ever see a dispensary. Right now, the only ones in Norfolk, the only one in Norfolk County that's been approved is in Quincy. I believe there might be one in Franklin at some future date, but I really don't think. If you're going to sell marijuana, Norfolk's the place to go.
So Ms. Whitney, just for also point of reference, what a lot of towns are doing is, in addition to some very rigorous state regulations and permit requirements, towns are doing another layer of limitations on where you can put them, and as is the case here, also requiring a local permit in addition to what you need from the state.
Oh, I wish I could grow taller. And I do understand that. I guess what I am unclear about still is who initiates the discussion about it's time to build one? Is that coming from the state down or the town up?
There's, I believe, at least five allowed per county, so.
So maybe Norfolk would say, gee.
But you have to get, if you don't have state approval and authorization, and there's a lot of money you got to put up too, you're not going to get into a locality.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Article 21. Okay, it is a zoning bylaw. It does require a two-thirds vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? It passes, I believe unanimously.
Mr. Moderator, any questions?
We have a motion to dissolve town meeting. Seconded, seeing no discussion, all those in favor.
Aye.
Thank you. Have a good evening.